Are you ready to go?
You bet.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. Could please do the roll call?
Heather?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Philip?
Here.
Marita?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
John?
All right. Do you have any amendments to the agenda for today's meeting? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any amendments to the minutes from the previous meeting? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any public comments that are unrelated to agenda items for today's meeting? Hearing none. Move on to the consent calendar. We have acceptance and scheduling of an application from Carolyn Crane for a conditional use permit for a home occupation at 204 Sandy Beach Road. We have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to continuation of the recommendation to the Borough Assembly to establish a marine industrial overlay district at the port dock area and Scal Bay turnaround area. Do we have any public testimony? Please step to the microphone and state your name.
I think this is the fastest meeting we probably have ever seen that. My name is Gloria Ann Wallen and I'm the harbor master and I'd like to speak on the recommendation to the Borough to establish a marine industrial overlay district at the port dock and Scal Bay turnaround. I don't know if you've heard, but we have really exciting news that we just were awarded $8.8 million for Scal Bay. It can now pay for the entire first leg of that project out there. Huge, huge news. We got $4.1 million last session, over a year ago now, so we have over $13 million for Scal Bay. And I'm super excited about all of that, as is, I think, the whole community, once the once the airwaves hit. So, back to this this conversation here, I think it is essential that we have in a marine overlay for that area on Borough-owned property as well as the port dock area. You know, the purposes of the marine industrial is to establish and promote the idea of a maritime economy by restricting areas on certain lands that are identified for protecting the economic resource of a marine waterfront and related lands. Shielding this maritime economy that we love to to talk about, that Petersburg is a maritime community, and including the commercial fishing, the marine industrial, and all the compatible uses. We have a lot of businesses that are now surrounded in our community that are based on access to the waterfront, and we need to protect that. And it will strengthen the maritime economy by reserving these waterfront lands for water-dependent industrial uses. And in marine industrial uses for directly for providing direct goods and services to water-dependent uses. We need to, we need to protect that, and I know within this conversation, you'll hear from private citizens that have investment invested in their protecting their, you know, their investments, but you have to look at the big picture, and this is how we do it, is through planning and zoning. You guys do the planning for the zoning that's going to take effect, you know, 50 years from now. And so, please do not lose sight of what our community is. It's a marine-based waterfront community. There's a big, big part of our economic stability is based on that and for the foreseeable future. Now, we can talk about, you know, the fishing's, you know, going kaput, or we can talk about all of those things, but we're we're a island, and we are, all of our income and outgoing goes through our waterfront, and we have to protect that. And so, I just hope that you will approve this and move it up the chain to the Assembly. Thanks.
Thank you, Glow.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question for you all. Yeah, well, I don't know if you're the one to set up the meetings between the Assembly and the Harbor Board or not, but my question is, you know, you're coming before us now and asking us to approve this. I'm wondering why we weren't invited to the meetings to listen in and listen to the conversation between the other user groups just so we had a better, fuller background of what you're talking about. I've read all this, this three or four times, and I get the picture. But I'm just curious why planning and zoning wasn't asked to come to these meetings, because that's our job. And I feel that was something that was missed and it should have been included, but...
You know, it's, yeah, it's been such a long, ongoing thing. I think it really came to a point when the sale of Wecon's property came about, and so it kind of came down from the top. The Assembly is the one that asks for the advice, and so they asked the Harbor Board. So they're the ones that would have invited you, and they didn't, apparently. Versus the Harbor Board, you know, coming up with the the rationale to advise. The Assembly is the one that asks the advice to the Harbor. So, I don't know. This is the standard process it goes through when there's when there's requests put in by the public. It goes to Debbie and she farms it out to the different groups, and you're on that list, so...
I guess it should have been a question for the Assembly then.
Yeah.
Because we're an advisory group, just like the Harbor Board is, and
Exactly.
I, I just figured out we missed out on a lot of the conversation going around. I missed the last meeting, too.
And likewise, I mean, I just, I didn't know that it was being discussed two years ago, or whatever it was, and all of a sudden then it's on the hot seat and I come before this board a couple of years ago and ask for this, and this has been an ongoing thing, and we're just putting it back on the back burner because we're getting some advances for Scal Bay. And so, we need to get some of this stuff established before we sell any more property and we, and we, you know, lose the control. Because we've lost control of a lot of it now by selling the property.
Yeah, I understand that, but there's still marine businesses that are going to probably be there for the future, it looks like.
For generations, sure, until they decide to sell it, and they don't have to follow any guidelines. And that's where we're at with Wecons, is they don't have to sell it to a marine industrial or a marine business. There were no, there were no caveats with that.
Are we that tight for marine property in Petersburg? Not having anywhere to expand other than the three-mile turnaround there, that's a
That's the only public we have is Scal Bay and what we had at the port. That's it. So, right now, if the Harbor has to expand, we have to, we would have to, you know, the Assembly would have to buy property.
Yeah, I was looking on the land map, or whatever you call it, the other day, and looking for land, and if there's other possible lands that the city could use to develop the marine industry. And it looked like there was a few, but, you know, a lot of them, a lot of you'd have to buy, you know, like along Libby Strait stretch, that whole stretch of water there is fairly deep and
And next to the ferry terminal.
It's state, yeah, next to the ferry terminal, it's state-owned, I mean, and a lot of it running the mental health stuff, too, but...
So, 20, 25 years ago, we as a community identified Scal Bay, and so that's when the trade happened with the Borough and the upland up at the airport. And that was, that was the thought behind it, that that could be the next location for, you know, waterfront, to be able to access the waterfront and through a harbor. And so, that's why Scal Bay has come up, and we have, the Borough has to, with the state negotiated and purchased more and more of the tidelands out there. And, and so, yeah, that's, that's the way it would have to go. We'd have to trade or buy or whatever it would from private or the state. So, yeah, these are long, long thought-out projects. I mean, like I said, we've been trading and planning for the Scal Bay, and all of a sudden, last Wednesday, we got word that that the federal government recognized it. So, you know, I've been working on that for 23 years, and here we are.
I thought that, I thought that was good news for your part.
It was huge news for the town.
I'm just, I'm just worried that if we do something, I think it's pretty much already covered with what we have, but I'm worried some new business will come into town that wants to get started and need waterfront property to operate, but may not be directly
And this will provide for that.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
So, if we don't, John, what would end up happening? You could have a quilt shop in the middle of the, you know, if John and Sherry can't find a business to to buy their property that is marine industrial, they're going to sell it to whoever, and it could be something completely incompatible with with, or incompatible but also not reliant on a waterfront. When John and Sherry bought that property, put that, that business in, a big part of it was so that it was adjacent to that port dock. You could tie a boat up, you could unload a Sainskiff, whatever, and truck it up to their shop and not have to go on Main Street, not have to go down the highway and get a permit. That's the value of waterfront for marine-related businesses. We don't need an auto shop there. I mean...
That was my question.
We don't. It's grandfathered in, it's grandfathered in, so all of the businesses are there are grandfathered in. But it's new business.
I'm sorry, were you done, John? I'm sorry.
Well, my, my final thought is what, if we do this today, it can always be undone if we don't figure it's working right. 10 years from now, the landscape might be entirely different. Like, right now, the landscape's changing dramatically. We have one processor left in town, one major processor. We used to have four when I was a little kid growing up, and it just, things change automatically. Of course, that's a half a century ago, but things do change, and I just didn't want to tie anything up to where we couldn't u- use it for other uses if we had to, because we needed them at the time.
We're talking publicly-owned property. We're talking Borough-owned property. We're not talking about your property or your property. We're talking about, you know, this is Borough property, this is all of ours.
It's to benefit the public.
It's the benefit of the public.
I know, and that's what makes me, if we take something out, it doesn't benefit the public anymore. I, I'm just, I'm just, maybe I'm overthinking this. I'm just...
Well, I just, I mean, and I love, I love this. I love this give and take, and I appreciate you letting me, because there's rare time that I can talk and give, give, you know, let's, let's follow, let's, let's follow your conversation through. So, when would we, when would it not be a good time to have public access to the waterfront? Forever, long after I'm, you know, gone. We'll always need that, and this protects that.
And I have a question for you. Do you feel that as it is already zoned industrial, that access to the waterfront is somehow lost if it stays that way? I don't see where the access to the waterfront that you're speaking to goes away. I mean, it isn't already there.
Yes, if you would have somebody that wants to come and set up a batch plant for a concrete mixer or something, it doesn't need to be on the waterfront. It could be, the Borough has oodles of land. It could sell them on that side of the highway, right? You can't access the waterfront from that side of the highway. It's imperative to keep I think, and keep industrial property that is marine-based on the waterfront. Right? So, to have businesses that are set up that, that don't need waterfront access, they should be on that side of the highway, on Borough-owned property. Private property, you can do whatever you want.
So, in thinking about what would be open to the Wecons for uses of their property, if this overlay went through, there could be a retail business, but only if it supports marine. So, unless something brand, brand-new comes down the line, they're going to be in competition with Piston and Rudder, Ace, Hammer and Wecon Hardware, Homeport Electronics, NAPA, Rockies Marine, whom, who is already selling and maintaining and installing all of these marine and, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out, and also Brock's Refrigeration. I mean, every, that seems pretty covered, those, those services, those supplies and needs seem to be covered. I mean, what would be left? That isn't already being those needs are already being met, I think. What would be left for the Wecons?
Not really my problem. I mean, that's their individual business. That is their, and that's not our job to to protect every single person's retirement or escape plan, I guess, is, you know, for existing businesses.
Yeah, but I feel like when they bought the property, they didn't see this coming down the line, so they saw industrial uses, which also includes some of commercial one uses and some of commercial two uses. It's, you know, in the, in the ordinance. And then also, there were conditional uses, and all of those go away. If I understand Liz, and I hope Liz will, will clarify that for me.
Right, so the only uses under the marine industrial overlay are the uses that are spelled out in the marine industrial overlay ordinance. So, you wouldn't have the broad, I think the difference, the main difference is the industrial is very broad and it allows all manner of residential uses. And the overlay, you know, really is targeted towards someone that needs to be on the water, you know, that, that their business is designed and benefits from having a location that is accessible to water. And then it also really restricts that residential use so that, honestly, so we don't end up with condos, you know, or whatever, on the waterfront displacing marine industrial uses.
Yeah, and I, I do understand that. I can see both sides. I also, I like diverse water fronts. I see them all over southeast. You know, we used to have a waterfront restaurant. It's gone, but, I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, on the bridge there. But I go throughout southeast Alaska, and I, I, I like sitting at the waterfront and eating in Ketchikan, and I'm not saying any of these particular lots would lend themselves to that, but an overlay, if we were to do an overlay now like this, it also could set a precedence.
Of course, I'm hoping it'll set a precedent, and, and that's not going to take away anything of what you're attracted to. They can go 50 feet down the line and buy somebody, Jim Strumdal's private property and turn it into the restaurant that is literally, literally 35 feet away from what you're talking about, Harold Nielsen's little restaurant. I mean, that does not, we're just talking about this Borough, these, this Borough property.
Right.
We're not talking about anybody outside. I mean, these are tiny, small footprints that all we're saying is the Borough needs to have a little bit of access to the water.
I, I have one more question for you, Liz. So, what about what about professional offices and business offices and stuff? I see that is also something that would go away.
Again, the only uses in the marine industrial are those that are listed in the marine industrial overlay as principal uses. So, you know, if someone had a marine industrial business and they had a office as part of that, well, yeah, that's part of their marine industrial business, but to set up like an office building, you know, where offices and doctors and dentists and professional offices that seriously do not need to be on the water, no, that would not be allowed you, in my opinion.
So, that, that's off the table for the Wecons also. They couldn't just reconfigure their building and open up some space for professional people to have offices and businesses to have offices.
You know, I, I would say, too, that, and Glow can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think with the Wecon sale, the, the issue that really occurred there was the timeline. The Wecons needed that to happen immediately. And I think pretty quick, the Harbor and the administration and the Assembly all realized that we really weren't ready to put some of these properties into private ownership, because we didn't have these guardrails set up. But because everyone wanted to see the diesel shop continue and succeed, everybody went ahead and said, "Well, let's do this because, you know, there's a need right here, immediate need, emergency need." But almost immediately after that, the conversation started about, okay, yeah, we had to do that, but now, if we're going to keep doing it, we need to make sure that we have some control of what happens here moving forward. So, that's, that's how I saw it play out, and Glow can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's exactly what happened. It was like, we got to make this happen quick. And, and, you know, the Borough has oodles and oodles and oodles of land to sell to people that want to do all of these other things. All we're asking for is to carve out and protect a tiny little footprint along the waterfront. It's miniscule, but we've got to protect it somehow, and that's what I'm advocating for.
Liz, I've got a, Glow probably can answer this, too. I've got a couple of questions. First is that, as I read it, the primary use has to be marine-related, but if they leased out a small part to somebody else that was not necessarily marine-related, is that okay?
Liz will have to interpret it, I mean...
That's just, I just wanted to clarify that. That's what I thought I read.
Yeah, I, I would say my gut feeling is probably not, because you're really, if someone leased it out, then that's their primary use.
Okay, I was saying if they had their business there, but they leased out a small portion of the building to something else, for instance.
Right, so what I'm saying is, you know, in order to sort of take advantage of that accessory use, which allows you to do a few more things, like retail or offices or whatever that are associated with your business, you have to have that primary use established. So, for instance, like, we can use Brock as a good example, so he's got his marine refrigeration business. So, yeah, if Brock wants to set up a retail as part of that, that's an accessory use, because he's got the marine industrial part set up with the refrigeration, so, but he's going to retail marine parts and other things related to that business. He's probably also going to have an office with a bookkeeper, hopefully, and et cetera. And that's going to be great, because, you know, that's also kind of an accessory use, but it's all tied into that main principal use, which is the marine industrial marine refrigeration. If the scenario you're talking about, you basically have two uses in one building, right? You have marine use, and then potentially you're saying someone would rent out the other use as a non-marine use.
And that...
I just want to get some clarification on that, because I thought that was kind of a little muddy in the description, so...
Yeah, so the accessory use, you know, it has to be accessory to the primary use, and so if you had a building that had two storefronts, you know, both of those storefronts, the primary use would have to be marine industrial. And then they could have accessory uses, again, like Brock with marine refrigeration, but then he could have a retail associated with that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had was the existing businesses that are within this overlay that are non-compliant, they're grandfathered in as of now, as long as they're there.
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify those two points, so, thank you.
So, I have a question. So, we, we keep talking about access to the waterfront, but what is the future of, that we keep selling property to individuals? Once these buildings are built, they're there forever, so not all buildings like Wecons can be converted to other things, so it kind of pigeonholes him. And that's, that's the risk he took when he, when he did that. You know, building a building on leased property is, is a tough go. And, but luckily for him, we stood behind him, sold him the property. But, once again, once these buildings are built, it kind of reduces access. You can't always convert some of these buildings into other things. I can't imagine Wecon's building being used for anything other than boat storage or engine repair or, so...
I mean...
So, do we still have access? We keep selling property and letting people build more buildings?
I certainly hope we don't sell any more property. We don't have any more waterfront property to sell. I mean, we filled that in, we being the Harbor, you know, your mortgage, filled that in to create land to make available to a marine industrial person like John Wecon, so that he wouldn't have to go uptown to get a Sainskiff off the beach up there, and that's what it was used for. And then they decided to sell it. Okay, so, I, I mean, in my opinion, they dug himself even deeper in. I don't know, I mean, those were choices that were made, and I, I, I was very much adamantly against it, and to, to them, I suggested you shouldn't do it. You don't do it. Don't buy it, because...
Then we went on, but then the Borough went on to sell more property.
Against my recommendation, yep.
Recommend. Came before us and recommended it.
Well, because I knew the route was going, that you'd rather sell it.
We don't have a motion, by the way. We're talking about it. We have not a motion on this yet.
Well, we thought we were still answering, getting questions, and I heard it this way.
Yeah, we're not discussing among ourselves, I just...
Yeah.
Here's another one. If Wecon, now Wecon owns that property and owns the building. So, with this Harbor or this marine overlay, he's, when he goes to sell that building, it has to fall into the, the use pattern that we did. So, if somebody wants to build a candy store there, they can't. So, okay, here's another scenario. So, he just says, "Well, heck with you guys. I'm just going to leave this building empty and pick up the spot, and you'll have to live with it, if you're going to be that way," you know, and then, of course, you can get, come to the Assembly and maybe get a variance, you know, but, I mean, there's, it just seems really, with what we have now, I seem that's, that's working fine, but anyway. I, I just hate putting things in a box that you can't get out without a lot of work.
Well, you know, the, the port area is one thing, and we're talking about an individual business owner that we're trying to, you know, they're retiring, so, okay. I got word yesterday to not give their name out anymore as recommended, so they've shut down, as far as we know, they've shut down the business. Look in the future towards towards, I mean, towards Scal Bay. I mean, would you meet me halfway and, and establish this before anybody gets out there? I mean, that's, a candy shop right in the middle of a marine industrial would completely, you know, there's, there's so many other places for a candy shop to go to.
I don't want to be out of order if I were to say then, could we consider only voting, you know, amending this proposal to only include Scal Bay? And leave the rest untouched? Can, can, is it proper and doable to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, you gotta close the, you have to close the public hearing and then
Then we can discuss that.
Make a motion and get a second, and then you can discuss. So, if you're done with the public hearing, I'm not sure if anyone else wants to speak, but...
Yes, we do have someone else who'd like to speak.
My name is Brock Snyder. I've got Highland Refrigeration. And I just wanted to give my feedback from like, the Borough sold us that piece of property and, and just give my point of view. I'm, I'm not opposed to the marine industrial overlay for my particular business. What I found that it did, when that was a suggestion, was it, it would possibly decrease the value of the land because of the limitation that's put on it. And for me, I'm thinking about the future generations of other industries, marine industries that could come in, and just the barrier of financial, if there's a competition from every other industry, and, like, it just makes it so you basically, we, we wouldn't be able to compete, like, we're pretty weak businesses, really, like mine, mine is. And so, the decreased value is actually a hopeful thing for the future that someone who is going to bring And so the decreased value is actually a hopeful thing for the future that someone who is gonna bring in. You, you mentioned about like what other industries could come here and there's, there's many. Like, we don't have any welders, like we're trying to do fabrication, but my, my hope is, is to invite people onto that land that I've, I've purchased to, to build a network of, of trades that can support the fishing industry. Because like we don't, we have piston and rudder and we don't wanna compete with them. We wanna complement them. But we wanna bring in other people that, um, like you have welders, um, all the different, we, we do electrical, electronics, refrigeration, but that, that requires expanding. And, and what I'm hoping is at the end of my career, that I can hand this off to another generation. And so how is that going to be affordable? Because I know how hard it is to break into this and it's like immediately I have to go into a million dollars with a debt off the bat. So I'm not opposed to the marine industrial overlay. I don't know about the other entities involved. That's just my personal opinion. I, like piston and rudder, I don't know how they feel about it. I don't know how, like, uh, Johnny Wecon, it's like, he just needs to find somebody to buy it. And I feel for that as well. So it's, but for my, for my personal thing, I don't feel like it's a bad thing. I, I think it helps protect, it kinda keeps the value of the land limited so that other people could get into it. And anyway, that's, that's just my input. I don't see it as a bad thing from my perspective. Um, so, uh, that, that's just what I have to say, I guess.
I have a question for Brock.
Yeah.
Um, what is, is your entire business, um, around marine or do you do heat pump for homes and refrigeration for stores and stuff like that?
Well, um, we, we were kind of doing that, but what I'm trying to do is forward all of my business in heat pumps. I've done a probably like, I could count them on one hand how many I've done. But I try to forward those to Brandon and Rob who are doing that. And it's, it's a lot different and it is land based. It's, it's not really a good business plan for me to pursue because it's so different. So if I, if I needed to throw that away, I wouldn't cry a whole lot. But I want those guys to succeed as well. I want Brandon and Rob to succeed in the other businesses. The grocery store, I, I actually just got rejected my quote to, to, um, replace all the refrigeration there. So I'm kinda like, I don't really wanna do that either. So I, I need to just focus on marine because that's, that's what my business really should be. So, yeah, I basically, if nobody else will do a heat pump, I'll do it. But I wanna focus on the marine. It's so much easier to focus on that. And I have to be very careful with the jobs that I take on. So does that answer your question?
I have sort of a follow-up behind that question.
Okay.
Knowing that you're just, right now, you're trying to strictly adhere to marine use, like refrigeration.
Trying to, yes.
So what happens if in the future, um, things go awry, more awry in the fishing industry than they already are? Um, and you, I, I, are you making ends meet now? I mean, what happens if it slips, sloughs off a little bit and you, you can't make ends meet and then you, you're stuck with this business of yours that you can't? You have a really restricted usage. You can sell it for, you know, that, uh, you know, curious, you know, what does, what does it take to, obviously you're doing okay right now because you're still in business. But if, if things taper off in the fishing industry, like I'm hoping it'll go this way, but.
Yeah.
I, I, I hope it doesn't go the other way.
Right.
What, what, you know, can you keep in that business without branching off into residential and, and stores and stuff?
Right, yeah. No, I, I see that. That's a very legitimate question and definitely something that's crossed my mind. Um, I am wildly optimistic that I, we, we want to push forward in this direction because if we get hopeless, it will collapse. Like the, if the support industry for the fishing industry goes away, it will completely migrate away from here. Like where people, like we need this support of, like I need piston and rudder to be there. I really want somebody who's an engine mechanic to buy Johnny. I just, it's really, like right now is everyone's in such question that they're not like, oh yeah, business that I can buy and are hopeful for that. But yeah, so, but what I see the whole time with the marine industrials, like, like Glow said, and you can amend it in the future. It would be a process. But if, if we go before the assembly and bring it up to amend it and it's like, no, this is getting bad. Like there's no, like it's done. Like we can bring it before the assembly and ask for it to be amended at that point. And it might be a longer process, but it is a possibility. But it, it's comforting to me to know that the, the borough is, is involved with, with this and the limitations aren't bad. They're, they're kinda protecting it, but if it, we get to this point where it's like, it's beyond the point of no return, we can still come before the assembly and ask them to amend this overlay and change it back to just industrial. But until we get to that point, I, I don't feel like it's a bad thing.
Like, one of my big concerns is having Petersburg get wrangled. You know, a lot of our businesses have gone to wrangle, you know, businesses where we used to participate in Petersburg. Gone over there because the businesses are disappearing in Petersburg. And they have a nice marine facility over there. They, they planned out really well on that and they use their timber sales money receipts for big improvements. I'm just, I just really, I'm wildly optimistic about the fishing industry myself. I've been voted my whole life to it, so. Um, and I. As long as I can, so, but anyway, I just had.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So I have a question for Liz. So if the overlay goes through and Brock's comes upon hard times, then these heat pumps that are meant for residential, they are not directly related to marine or fishing activities and, you know, grocery stores, uh, medium refrigeration and stuff like that. That's off the table because it's not an accessory to the primary use, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Uh, let me double check here exactly what it said.
I know you said that.
Under accessory uses, it says uses and structures that are clearly, clearly incidental and subordinate in size and scale to the principal use and which are located on the same lot. Um, so I would consider that if it's as he describes it where it, you know, not the primary focus of his business, he could make the case that it's a subordinate use, right? It's, it's a small portion of his marine business.
So work in a residential home would be considered, uh, an accessory use to his business. That, that works there. So it should surely work in, in another application for a different business in the area.
I'm, I didn't hear.
That's what you're saying.
I didn't hear what you said at first. You said work in a residential home.
Right. Mm-hmm. Like you said that, well, the commissioner's question was, our, our chairman's question was, if you open up a business and it complies, but you know, in the back room, you have leased out to somebody else or you have started a secondary business that is not marine or waterfront, um, specific, are you still in compliance? And you said, if I understood you right, you said, no. The accessory use has to be, uh, um, within the, it has, the, the additional use has to be an accessory to the primary use, which I wouldn't think going to a residential home would be.
I, I really don't understand what you're asking here. Um, you mean, are you talking about the caretaker dwelling?
No, I'm not talking at all about a caretaker's dwelling. I'm talking about when, uh, our, our chairman asked, if you are in compliance and you have a business that's in this overlay and everything is great, but then you open up a portion of your business to do something that is not related to waterfront, um, specific, that is not related specifically to marine, uh, fishing industry or whatnot. Are you in compliance? And you said, no, you thought that that accessory use would have to be somehow, um, a part of the primary use. Your accessory has to fit into your primary business.
Correct.
And I was saying, going away from the waterfront, like, you know, because we're making a, you know, this is all about the waterfront, to go into someone's private home, isn't that a stretch? To, is that, is that really an accessory to the primary use? If Glow and, and everyone is saying the primary use is waterfront activity.
Start a motion so that we can.
Let's, we can't really talk. We can ask questions.
Well, I guess, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question or not, but first of all, an occupation in a residential area is not an accessory use. Um, that's allowed as a conditional use. Accessory uses in a residential area are things like garages and greenhouses and things like that.
I wasn't talking about uses in residential area. I was talking about a business on the waterfront that would then leave the waterfront to go to a residential home to say install heat pumps.
Oh, okay. Gosh, I kept, I couldn't understand what you meant when you kept saying residential. And I was like, well, I don't know what it has to do with residential. But anyway, okay. So again, uh, Chris's example had two businesses in one building, as I understood it, right?
Yes.
So there was two uses. One was marine and one was not marine. So the marine one would comply, the not marine one does not.
So heat pumps for homes would not.
In Brock's example, it's one business, it complies, and then they have kind of this subordinate use, which is minor to the business. So that would comply because he has an established primary use.
So let me clarify a little bit more on this. Say the marine demand slows down and Brock's business decides he's gonna do some commercial refrigeration and home or, home heat pumps as well to make up the slack so he can stay in business, which is we, something we really want. That would be in compliance. Also, if he has a bookkeeper that's got an office in there for him and his business is slowed down, that bookkeeper could take on some little extra jobs. And that would be okay because they're primarily working for his business.
You can't see me, but I'm nodding. Yeah.
I, I do follow and I understand all of that, except I guess I didn't understand how, um, the heat pump was part of marine to start out. Like say, in the very beginning, when he opens his business and he's a refrigeration guy, do heat pumps go on boats?
They can.
I don't have one. So then he can take his.
Yeah, that's, it's, uh, yeah, HVAC and refrigeration are very closely related. It's very similar techniques and, and everything else. I used to do a heat pump, so.
Okay.
Um, anyway, uh, it should be related and I can understand there'd be latitude given if things slow down in the marine industry to allow a business to be able to stay in business because we want them there to support the marine industry. So that's kinda what, what I'm, the way I'm seeing it. So I think. Yeah. Okay, we can go on to discussing among ourselves now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion so we can discuss.
Please.
I, I move to recommend the, to the Borough Assembly that Title 19 be amended by adding Section nineteen point fifty, marine industrial overlay attached here for reference along with the findings of fact as presented. And with a second.
Second. Discussion.
Back to what Heather was talking about. That sparked a question for me. Percentage of business. Do you have to have over a certain percentage of business directed to marine before you can work in this overlay area?
The way I read it was the primary business has, which would mean me, to me, be over fifty percent. Has to be marine.
Right.
Um, but I can see latitude being given if, you know, as conditions change to a point.
Yeah, but then you're gonna have to come and get a conditional use.
Yeah, well, well, I'm saying, as long as it's the same business, the percentage of it, say things really slow down in marine refrigeration, it's a good example. Uh, he could take on other work to stay in business to still be able to provide the marine services. And I don't think he's gonna look at it too closely. Now, if he says, I'm not gonna do any more marine refrigeration, then it's gonna be, no, you can't be there. So.
Um, I was thinking of when he was talking, so the welder, for example, um, you know, which we need honestly in this town. And that, that'd be a great use of the Wecon building. They're gonna supplement, they're gonna supplement welding however they can because there are gonna be times where they're not gonna have fishing boats in there or trailers and stuff. And so if, if I have a trailer for my truck and they're a welder, I'm gonna take it there to have it done. It's just keeping business. But, okay, so the marine industrial overlay thing is not a new thing. When I first got here, I actually read about the tourist plan. I read about the marine plan. I read that. So this is not anything new. And so the fact is that we're all sitting here being surprised. It's kinda, um, enlightening to me. But when John and Sherri Wecon came, they told us the intent was to keep it as marine. They told us that was part of the deal for us to approve the sale of the product. And just because their thing fell through, they came here and publicly testified their intention was to keep it that way. When Brock, um, wanted to purchase the thing, he said the same thing. So I appreciate what he said, by the way. Um, so it's not our responsibility to say, oops, they're not able to sell their business now. We need, we need to do something to protect them. Because the whole condition of us approving the sale was they guaranteed that it would remain fishing and, um, uh, marine time, uh, related. So, you know, when, uh, you're talking about, um, there are a lot of people here that, I have Yamaha, but a lot of people have Mercury's. Mercury engines on their boats. And where do they have to go? They have to go to wrangle. And so it would be really nice if someone wanted to open up a Mercury, uh, repair place where the Wecons, there are options available. I, I like the idea that he said about the fabrication and the welding. These are all different uses. It is a basically industrial warehouse. It's not like you're gonna build a pillow clothing or a restaurant inside that building because it just wouldn't fit it very well. Um, personally, I'm not like, um, if we didn't have a lot of other property, she's right, there are private owned properties all along the shores that people can purchase. It's only two small sections relatively to this, the, um, the island that they're asking for. But what, it goes back to the whole thing. When I first got here five years ago and I read the plan, it was already in writing. It's not like it just got changed.
When I first started on planning commission, one of the first things we did was the comprehensive plan. And this was heavily discussed in the comprehensive plan. Glow's nodding her head. She was in a lot of the meetings with me on that. So it's not like it's something new. It's something we've discussed for quite a few years. So.
I was planning, I was, Glow was probably still in grade school.
Yeah.
Uh, and we did a comprehensive plan and of, that's always in there because you know how this town is, that's the way it is. So there's always been something.
Yeah.
Some caveats for the marine industry.
If we were trying to take away private land to convert it, I would be against it, I'll be honest with you. But this is already public land. It was already earmarked for this purpose. And so, um, that's why I'm willing to support it because it's, we're not changing it. We're just defining it.
And as I see it, there's, there's two landowners who are affected pretty much. So otherwise, it's the borough. The rest is owned by the borough.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, with Wes and Angela's new business behind, um, Napa, their Napa, they've done such, that's amazing job they've done. Will they, I, I, I thought they were gonna maybe take up Mercury and start working on, um.
You'd have to talk to them. I have no idea. I, there's nothing. I can give you, I can't give you any information on another business.
I understand. No, I just see it there and I'm thinking, gosh, it's gonna be working on something. And that's what I had possibly there, thought that they would be working on.
Any other comments?
I, one comment also is that, yes, I think in the heart of their hearts, they thought they had their business sold and this is what they wanted to buy the property for. And unfortunately, things changed. But at the time that they bought, they bought industrial zoned property and now after the fact. But at the time that they bought, they bought industrial zoned property and now after the fact, we're trying to, um, force this overlay on them. And it does take away a lot of uses, some of which I realize wouldn't be conducive for that property. But some that would, you know, like auto repair or maybe manufacturing and not, I mean, granted, what you're talking about, uh, with welding would fit into that new usage. But there might be some manufacturing or fabrication that wouldn't be specific to vessels or marine and I don't have a reason why they shouldn't have some of those uses still open and available to them. I mean, even if it were, um, uh, re, uh, excuse me, offices for, you know, people to open up offices there, office space. I like diverse waterfronts, I see them all over the place. Um, Seattle, Des Moines area, I like sitting in a restaurant, eating on the waterfront. Not, I don't think any of these properties necessarily, um, are conducive for eating on the waterfront, but an overlay precedence I don't like, I feel like the industrial uses that are already outlined for industrial zone property is sufficient.
Yes, true.
I'm just going through the eleven categories on here. I've been hearing for years that the Harbor Department needs a new workshop and building and offices and, hey, I've got a solution for you. Buy Wecon's out, piss right into the Harbor overlay plan. That's one of the reasons I'd support this. I, I, I am gonna support this. I, I'm a little bit reluctant because of the, I, I don't know if it's a flexibility problem or not, I, anything that's done through the, this process can be changed, so. Um, and maybe it'll open up an avenue for the Harbor Department to get their new workshop that they need and, and new offices, but if, if that were-
This overlay doesn't have to be implemented for them to go ahead and do that.
Absolutely not.
Those, those usages already exist under industrial.
I just see, I just see an opportunity, but anyway.
And I think that that opportunity is there without the overlay. They, in, industrial and the portions of commercial one, commercial two allow for a Harbor Masters storage, uh, office, ever, all the things. It doesn't need to be an overlay to accomplish that.
So we're not, we're not talking an overlay just for that area. We're talking about an overlay for Scal Bay. We,
Yeah.
The whole purpose of this is to create an environment that welcomes small cottage businesses that support the marine industry. So by, by doing this, you know, the, the growth to me is gonna be Scal Bay. There, there's room, there's properties, there's, um, the city's not involved really out there a lot, so. Yes, this, this includes more than just the Wecon area, so. I, I think it's important that we do create or give incentives to businesses to move in. We need, we need welders, we need fiberglass people, we need all that.
And they're allowed, the way it's zoned now, they are allowed those op, those usages, definitely. So I'd like to make a motion that we vote on the Scal Bay portion of this proposal separately.
It's already a motion in, in, in place, you'd have to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay, I make an, I make an amendment to the motion that we vote on the Scal Bay portion of this proposal. And that only.
Second for the moat. Any further discussion? Questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we exclude the Wecon property from this proposal.
All questions. Okay. Roll call.
John?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Marita?
Yes.
Heather?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Commissioner comments. Do we have any comments, anyone?
Oh, my, my comment is I think we did it the right thing on this last motion. I was reluctant to go for it at the start. But knowing that this is a public process, it can be changed as easy as back with the same, same amount of work, so, uh, uh, anyway, that's, that's why I supported it. If it gets to be a, too onus and hard for anybody to do anything around town, it'll get changed, so. That's my comment.
All right. Any other comments?
No, I just want to say it's okay for us not to all agree. We are here to represent the community and Heather, you're representing, I appreciate that, so.
Thank you. All right. Liz, any staff comments?
Uh, just wanna say we have a meeting February and we do have agenda items already, so hopefully we will have a quorum for that. And, um, gosh, there was one other thing. Oh, and to, um, uh, Commissioner Jensen's point, uh, about inviting the planning commission, next time, yeah. No, it's, it's a good, uh, it's a point well taken and I'll try to remember to, to make sure that that invite gets extended next time.
Thank you, Liz. All right. Our next meeting is, uh, Tuesday, February 11th at noon. Who all thinks are gonna be here? I'll be here.
I don't know yet.
My surgery is up for schedule, I don't know. I have no idea.
You'll be here? Okay, so at least have a quorum. That sounds good. All right, do we have a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?